We do have one that we are unable to swear in tonight, and I just thought about that. I was handing out the oaths. So Bruce Johnson was not able to be here. He was going to call in. I think we're trying to connect, but I'm not sure if we're able to connect because he's got to sign it before I can swear him in. So he cannot do any duties until he's sworn in.
I don't remember.
Fish. Johnson, Jorgensen, Cole, Lawrence, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Steve Reed at 1107 East Lark. I guess, I don't know, have you guys seen the video from the initial? Okay, so I ended up appealing it because of...
And can I just interject, just to make sure everybody understands, there's no new testimony that's allowed during the appeal. So if you want to restate something that you presented, if anybody wants to restate something that was presented or have a comment about something that was presented below, that's what this is limited to. You can't bring up anything new. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
There has been a precedent set. There's several businesses that are already selling items from their home, including firearms. That is why I appealed. Since there's nothing new that can be added, I think that's where I have to leave it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Dan Mostack. I live at 1112 Lark Street. And I'm just here to not recap, but to state our concern about this request of his to purchase and retail gun sales in our neighborhood. I emphatically would have you look at what the planning and zoning has recommended to you and to review that in sincerity and deny his request for the fourth time. We've been here now visiting, it's the fourth time we've had a visit with you folks, not only you, but the planning and zoning, about this same request. I think enough is enough. Thank you.
Good evening as well. I'm Julie Gottsleben from 1101 East Lark Street. My husband and I, Wayne and I, we live just right next door to Mr. Reed. And it does sound like everybody did read the video, so I will try to keep this nice and brief this time. I did get a little long last time. But I do want to just kind of utterate and kind of recap that, yes, we do have a very longevity neighborhood. A lot of us have lived in our neighborhood between 17 and 53 years, and there's multiple ones of us. So we are proud of our neighborhood that we have built, and we like it as it is. We do not wish to have a home-based retail, selling, and service business in our neighborhood. I talked about in the past that we do want to, Dan just mentioned how many times we've been here. Yeah, it is getting annoying. Everybody has a right, but we as neighbors, and we've got a lot of them here again, our last meeting, we had eight people get up and speak and give our concerns about why we don't want the business in our neighborhood. We also had an additional five people that sent letters of the same request that weren't able to be there that night. So here I am again, standing in front of you. The first thing is, is that, you know, Mr. Reed is basically asking you to violate our local zoning ordinance for his own benefit, for selling and making cash off of profit of selling gun sales in his home. He has kind of sugarcoated or camouflaged his request this time, and he wants to now do a service along with it. And I'm sure you've got that in there with the saracoting. At our last meeting, we kind of was asking him about that, and at that time, he really didn't, had never done the saracoting. He just knew that he wanted to add it as a business and as a service. So Dan did bring up, Dan Mostack did bring up some information from the MSDS sheet in regarding what the saracot really pertained and how toxic it is and cancerous, has some cancerogenic properties along with it. And it also does not want you to dispose of any of those chemicals down our water, in our water sewer. So since he hasn't really worked with it at this point, I'm not sure that he really realizes all the background of what he's even dealing with. Planning and zoning did give him some good recognition last time for being a little bit more organized. Part of it, I think, is a little more confusing on my part. On that same permit that you have up here, if you scroll down to the bottom, it says that his business hours are Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. But when we were visiting with him, that isn't really the case. So that's, so there's some non-factual statement there on his permit. On that same permit, he also says that the only thing that he feels that Mr. Reed, that Mr. Reed feels is an impact for our neighborhood is that it will slightly increase traffic. He apparently doesn't feel that safety is a crucial issue. We do. We feel that it will be potentially at a higher risk for theft, vandalism, more truck traffic. So we disagree that he only feels that it will be light traffic. We live in a real quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. We don't really feel that we need any more unnecessary attention to our neighbors, to our neighborhood. We are a residential R1-zone neighborhood. Mr. Reed's business of retail sales and service belongs in a commercial-zoned area, not a residential area. And so...
I would move to uphold the planning and zoning commission's decision.
Decision.
I guess I just appreciate Mr. Reed for what he's, he's gone through this process and took the necessary steps and gone through this process. I know it's been a lot for the residents here, but I appreciate this process that you have gone through. And I hope that you can find a space, at least where I'm leaning at voting, I hope if it doesn't land here at your home, I hope you can find a commercial space that you can do your business.
Thank you. I just have a real tough time understanding where there is an existing business doing the exact same thing that I'm asking to do already three doors down from one of the P&amp;Z, excuse me, three doors down from the P&amp;Z committee, or one of the members of the planning and zoning committee. So I just fail to understand how somebody else can operate doing the exact same thing, and I'm being denied again. Thank you.
I'll address that. The person that he is referring to, at least from my recollection of planning and zoning, and it was a while ago that he came before us, his business was something called hydrodipping, which is water and paint, not saracoting, and not bringing in and retail-selling guns. Now, is he doing it out of his house? I have no idea. That's not the conditional use that he asked for. He asked to have them shipped in, paint them, ship them back out again, so.
It is in regards to whites on Marine Drive. In the planning and zoning committee's list of approved businesses for conditional use, it actually says "sales" right in the business column.
Ryan, if this is a concern, an enforcement concern of a conditional use, what would the process be to ask that that be looked into?
Our zoning compliance is complaint-based, so if someone observes something that they don't think is allowed or permitted, they can certainly contact the city and we will go check on it. But we don't have an enforcement officer that's out driving around checking on conditional uses or anything like that.
So, a little while back... You do have one letter that's in front of you. A lady couldn't be here, but it's on the email in front of you from Shawna Shipper. So we did receive that email today. And there are copies in the back if anyone would like to see it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on just a second. Was that really the first reading of ordinance 681, or was that a reason, an application that we just should have been approving?
Not that 681 is rezoned property. All rezoners are ordinancees.
Okay.
Okay. Standing Committee reports, golf course, we have a hire seasonal staff on page 51. I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to hire the seasonal staff. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Parks and Rec have the work report on page 52. We have pool staff to hire, page 53. I'll look for a motion on that. Motion a second to approve the hiring of the pool staff for the summer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Sioux Falls K-9 rescue dog show in McCarty Park. What's the story on that?
They would like to have a dog show on June 24th in McCarty Park. Registration is 7:30. Dog show starts at 8:00. Anybody can participate if they want to. That's about it.
Okay.
It was discussed and approved by the park committee.
Motion a second to approve that request. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign.
Correct, it's a fundraiser for them.
All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have a seasonal employee to hire on page 57. I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve the hiring of the seasonal employee for Parks and Rec. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 12-23, donating to Hogsgrass Village playground equipment to the City of Valley Springs, page 58 and 59. I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve resolution 1223. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I noticed that the equipment's already been removed. When are they going to start the installation?
The T-Tempo Soccer Tournament, page 1661, a request for a special event.
Tempo Classic Soccer Tournament, they requested down at McCarty Park for June 9th through 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day. This will be the third, fourth? I think at least the third tournament that we've hosted for them, yeah.
Park Board recommended that we approve it, so I would make a motion to approve.
Motion a second to approve the soccer tournament. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Public safety. Yeah, thank you. Okay. We need to purchase a police vehicle on page 62 and 63.
We have a quote from Carl's Chevrolet in Ankeny, Iowa, for a 2023 Chevy Tahoe. The PD has been looking for a vehicle for a year and a half. If you remember, we authorized the purchase of two at least a year ago. One was canceled, one was, have we taken delivery yet?
We ordered two in 2021 for 2022 delivery. One did show up, the other one got canceled, and we're still waiting on it. So it's been October of 2021, we're still waiting on it. And if nowhere else to order, can't get it, can't get it in order for one.
Yeah, there's no state bids. Lieutenant Peterson called around to dealers to see if they had access to any patrol vehicles. And this is the only one that came up, had a conference out in Deadwood. Carl's purchases a number of fleet vehicles that are pursuit-rated. You know, my recommendation is that we don't go for a run-of-the-mill, off-the-lot car. We need a pursuit-rated vehicle for the PD. So we've got a quote for them for $41,407. It's 1,400 bucks over the 2023 budget, and then Carl's will also install all of our equipment. Back for the 41,400, that will be additional. This is just for the vehicle.
Yeah.
What's the estimated delivery time?
I believe that we, lucky with this, when we were on a wish list or waiting list, we found a budget. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, uh, I believe they're expecting it in June, but we don't have an exact date yet.
So, the state law was changed here recently to go from 25,000 to 50,000?
That's for supplies.
Equipment was changed a few years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. Equipment's 50.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion a second to, uh, purchase the 2023 police vehicle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The inspection reports on page 64 and 65. Okay, Administration. Um.
Go ahead.
We will start with, um, some appointments that require council approval. Um, the first one will be for our official depository. We have First National Bank in Sioux Falls, Brandon Branch, First National Bank in Sioux Falls, First National, uh, First Interstate Bank in Brandon, Wells Fargo, uh, Brandon Branch, and the South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust. I'll look for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second to approve our official depositories. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. City Attorney, I'd like to appoint Lisa Marso with, um, Boyce Law Firm as our city attorney.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second to approve, uh, Lisa Marso as our city attorney. Any further discussion?
And you're sure you want to still do this?
Yeah.
Don't ask that.
I enjoy working with you guys.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Um, like to appoint the Brandon Valley Journal as our, um, official newspaper. We really don't have many choices. Um, we do have a couple council members, however, that are, um, stockholders or donators, um, however you want to put it.
Donators.
Um, um, and so we therefore don't really have a quorum.
Yeah, we can't, we can't.
We can?
As long as you get the majority of those who vote.
Okay. All right. Move to approve?
Who's recusing themselves?
I.
And Dave.
Aye, second.
Motion a second to approve the Brandon Valley Journal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, Park Advisory Committee, I would like to appoint Mindy Hanson again. Uh, she's done a good job on that. Um, and so, uh, I'll look for a motion on that.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the appointment of, um, Mindy Hanson to the Park Advisory Committee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Planning and Zoning, uh, we've had, uh, some, actually good interest in the planning and zoning position. Uh, at this time, I'd like to appoint, uh, Michael Totes, um, to a three-year term on planning and zoning.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion a second to approve that, uh, appointment. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Appointment carries. Uh, the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund, it's a two-year term. I'd like to, uh, reappoint Barb Fish. And I'll look for a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion a second to, uh, appoint Barb Fish to the Revolving Loan Fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Library Committee, Mr. Tim, Tim Jorgensen.
No, it's, it's, uh, member Call. I made a mistake on the, uh, Jorgensen.
They're fighting over it.
Okay. Mr. Call and I had a wrestling match last year and he won, so he gets library.
All right.
Dominated.
No rematch?
No. None required.
I guess I'll be reporting, or, uh, appointing Dave Call to the Library Committee. And I'll duck for a motion.
Second.
Motion a second to appoint, uh, Dave Call to the Library Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, appointment for the, uh, the, uh, council participation in, uh, the various committees. As I understand it, this doesn't need council approval.
Correct.
So, I would like to appoint, uh, to the admin group, Dave Call. Audit Committee, Steen and Johnson. Golf Committee would be Johnson. Park and Rec would be Fish. Public Safety, Kevin Lawrence, our new member. Streets would be Jorgensen. And Utilities, Steen. Those appointments made, we'll move on to the CIP meetings. I'd like to have some comments from staff on that.
It's springtime, so one of the first things that we do in May with the new council is go through the capital improvements plan and start looking at the next five-year cycle. So, we'd be looking at our 2024 through 2029 CIP plan. So, we would like to meet on the off Mondays, so it'll be the second, fourth Mondays to start with. Um, if four o'clock is agreeable with everybody, it would be four o'clock on Monday, May 8. We'll, uh, plan on reviewing the existing plan. Uh, any cost changes, believe it or not, there are some. Um, and then, uh, seek council input for any additional projects that you would like us to get some cost estimates on or take a look at. And then we'll, we'll look at those revised costs at the next meeting, which would be on the, um, one second. Thank you. I was having a tough little ad.
Okay, we don't need any motion on this.
No.
All right. Um, anything else from communication standpoint?
Test is back.
Okay.
So.
So is Sammy.
Office staff has a little more, uh, I don't want to say free time, but freedom.
Yeah, I wouldn't say free time. Uh, the tax abatements on page 66 to 68, we have four, um, tax abatements. Um, if you've had a chance to look at them, if you haven't, do you need some discussion, we can do that. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
All of these were recommended by the county.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the four tax abatements. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the Street Department, work reports on page 69. We have a seasonal employee there. I'll look for a motion on the seasonal employee.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion a second to approve the seasonal employee for the Street Department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then we have some Sanders that are surplus, and we need to, uh, declare them as so.
And each, recommendation is each of those would have a value of less than $500.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second to, uh, approve declaring the Sanders a surplus property. Any discussion?
What's their, uh, what's their, uh, scrap value? I mean, might as well just haul them in there, right?
If we can get somebody to pick them up, we would save staff time.
We've had some good luck and some bad luck when we've taken it out to the Oshkans before, uh, up by that Yogi Bear campground. So, we'll try it there. If we don't get anything, they'll still buy them for scrap too, so I'll haul them once.
Who's in the market for a Henderson Chief Sander model, whatever?
There's a lot of people that go out there, have lawn care services, and do snow removal in the wintertime, so.
Are these like the back of a dump truck size Sanders?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Could sand your driveway for a few winters.
We have a motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have a water and sewer, uh, opportunity here, the Dakota Mainstream, um, contribution on page 72 to 78. Uh, Brian, why don't you bring us up to date quickly on that?
Sure. Dakota Mainstem is, uh, a project or a group that's very similar to Lewis and Clark. Their concept is to take water from the Missouri River, I believe, somewhere north of Pierre, and bring it east. So, we have a study advisory group in place consisting of a number of communities, uh, rural water, uh, organizations, as well as some cities. So, they're in the process of, uh, organizing, kind of, uh, getting everybody on board, or at least that's interested in participating in, in the project. They're working on some articles of incorporation. They're putting together, uh, an executive committee, a board. So, they are looking for some contributions to, for the startup costs. If you look on page 73, they've already received commitments from a number of organizations for $74,000. They've got another $70,000 that is pending. Most of those are from the water development districts that the Dakota Mainstem would be serving. Uh, they've sent this request out to all of the members of the advisory group. I think it would be beneficial if we contribute something to them, maybe a thousand dollars. Um, you know, we're just trying to keep our options open for any and all potential water sources in the future. And this project is very much in the future. They have a potential, uh, timeline for the project starting in 2023, and they are anticipating that the initial project construction completion will take place in 2058.
Ooh.
So, they're, yeah, they're, they're very much following the model of Lewis and Clark with, uh, requests for federal earmarks, which are now allowed again. Um, but who knows how long that will last. So, that's, that's the big question mark in the construction is the federal funding component of it. So, but yeah, we'd be looking at 2058 for construction.
I will make your city attorney.
Why's everybody bailing on this?
There's a chance I could still be the mayor.
Yeah.
Brian, from conception to the first, uh, community that was brought online with Lewis and Clark, what was that timeframe?
Oh, jeez. I don't know the first community. Um, 1993 is when the city of Brandon made the decision not to participate in Lewis and Clark. And the closest community for us that got hooked up was Laverne. And we would have been hooked up on that same line, and that was, I believe, in 2017. And there are, still are some communities, primarily, I think, in Northwest Iowa that are not hooked up yet. Thank you.
And you're saying this, maybe a thousand dollar contribution would just be a one-time deal that they're looking for?
Yeah. To get things started, you know, to, 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 uh, show our interest.
Right.
Uh, you know, when it comes down to it, if, if it follows the Lewis and Clark, um, plan, they will start the initial engineering, uh, get some cost estimates, give those out to the members, and then the members will have a chance to buy into it if they so choose. I know in 93, I think there were three options on the table for the city with Lewis and Clark, ranging anywhere from 250,000 gallons a day to a million gallons a day. Um, I think the only one that the, the city considered, fully considered, was 250,000 gallons a day for two and a half million in 93. So, we'll see. There's some debate going on, um, on the advisory committee for the Dakota Mainstem about who the potential board member should be and who the potential customer should be. There's a debate of city versus rural water districts as to who would, and which way that pipeline would run. And if that project would serve out-of-state members. So, there is some discussion about extending it over to Minnesota. So, there's, and there's, there's some, um, discussions.
Where are they tapping that being the water from?
North of Pierre.
The Missouri River.
Missouri River, north of Pierre, heading east.
So, between this and the Lewis and Clark II, and I, I just read about another one of these getting built up in Aberdeen to service them, um, which one will be done first between Lewis and Clark II and this?
If I knew that.
And how much water does the Missouri have to give?
That I do know, I do not know. I'm assuming that, uh, a lot of that will be taken care with their initial, um, submission of plans to the Corps of Engineers. You also have to remember that the states further south have water rights in the Missouri River as well. So, um, that's, 2058 sounds like a long time, but when you're dealing with the federal government, water rights, and the Corps of Engineers, that's a somewhat aggressive timeframe. I hate to say that.
Somebody told me that Denver's actually looking at the Missouri River.
Yep.
Anyway, we have, uh, we'll need a motion to approve a thousand dollar, um, contribution to this, uh, effort.
A motion?
Seems like it makes sense, yes.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion and a second to approve a thousand dollar contribution to this effort. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any other new business. We don't need an executive session that I know of.
Nope.
Therefore, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're adjourned.